Members of council and I'll just take a moment for you to get seated. Good morning, I will call this committee the whole meeting for Wednesday, October 11th. Members of council, normally we don't do this in committee the whole meetings, but I'm going to ask you to stand and join me in a moment of silence to recognize the horrific attacks that took place in Israel over the weekend, but I also want to, at the same time, recognize Michael Fernandin, Fernandan, the security guard in Pickering Casino who lost his life on the weekend. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, electronic roll call starting now.
Okay, so we'll move on. Declarations of interest. Online, Mr. Clerk? Seeing none, we'll move on. There are no statutory public meetings. We have two presentations, Alyssa Scan, manager of Housing Services Division, Simone Hodgson's, Associate Community Engagement, Boosefields, Inc., and Jocelyn Deeks, Partner in Community Engagement, Boosefields, Inc., re-community engagement framework for the Durham Region and Local Housing Corporation redevelopment. Good morning. Just one second, we'll get your microphone turned on. There you go.
Is it on now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Hi, thank you for having us here this morning. My name is Alyssa Scan, I'm the manager of Social Housing Operations for the region of Durham, so I oversee the day-to-day operations of the Durham Regional Local Housing Corporation. And as you're aware, we have identified a few sites for redevelopment. We're starting Phase One of this redevelopment with our Malaga Street townhouses and Christine Crescent semi-detached houses, both in Oshawa. To help make this transition more seamless for our tenants and the broader community, we have engaged Boosefields Incorporated for our communication and engagement plan. Jocelyn Deeks and Simone Hodgson are here today from Boosefields to present the initial communications and engagement plan to you.
Thank you, Alyssa, and hello, everyone. My name is Jocelyn Deeks, I'm a partner at Boosefields and I lead the community engagement practice. I'm here with my colleague, Simone Hodgson, who is an associate on our team. We are honored to have been selected as successful proponents of the region's RFP for community engagement consultant for this very important project in Durham. We look forward to working with the tenants, residents of Durham, staff, and yourselves to create a positive and meaningful community engagement process. We are here today to present to you a summary of our community engagement framework that we have developed to support the community housing redevelopment project. We understand that the region has two key goals: to initiate the development of 1,000 new affordable rental housing units across the region of Durham, and to modernize and increase the housing capacity at four DRLHC sites, starting with the Malaga Road and Christine Crescent properties. The purpose of this framework is to act as a roadmap for our engagement efforts at both properties. As part of our early engagement efforts, we have set up dedicated project emails and phone numbers for both properties and updated the project website. This has given tenants and nearby neighbors avenues to contact the project team with their initial questions and comments. However, we have much more in store, which I will come to shortly. The maps on this slide highlight each of the properties to be developed, just so you have that mental image in your mind. DRLHC and region staff are committed to ensuring that the residents of these two communities will receive both support and ample notice throughout their relocation process. We have already shared with residents that they will be consulted on their individual relocation plans at the appropriate time. Thinking ahead to what these communities could be, our team has been brought on to help facilitate discussions on what the community wants to see on the property, and ultimately inform the overall design of the proposed redevelopments. We've seen how making people a part of the process from the early stages is integral to creating vibrant and healthy communities. There are four key principles that underpin this engagement framework. First, we take a tenants-first approach, knowing that they are the people who live in the current communities, will need to relocate, and may wish to return to the new revitalized communities. Second, using a variety of engagement methods and tools to capture feedback and comments from different groups. People choose to engage in a manner that is convenient and comfortable for them. They use their voices in different ways, and we have created a number of channels to allow for quick thoughts, more detailed feedback, and creativity in their ideas. So far, we've also heard some important feedback from children in these communities, and family-friendly engagement is something that we will continue throughout the process. Third, collaborating with community and stakeholders to develop and implement various engagement activities and events. We've designed this framework to be flexible and responsive to community feedback. We're also very excited that we have onboarded a community member as a project coordinator to work with us at Boosefields, which is a part-time, temporary position, who is going to work alongside us in executing this framework. Finally, share with the public how their input has informed and developed the proposal. We want people to be able to see how their comments and input are reflected in the final design. As outlined in the RFP, the project consists of three key phases. Today, we're kicking off Phase One, the visioning process. Once the vision is established, the design consultant will create initial design concepts. Following public discussions and workshops on these concepts, we will proceed to the last phase, which is to finalize the design concept for approval. As part of our research, we have identified various key stakeholder groups who will be engaged throughout the process. We appreciate your input as the elected officials responsible for these areas and these projects, and with staff, look forward to keeping in touch as we progress. Additionally, there are a number of other municipal and regional entities that will have valuable information for us and the design consultant. We mentioned earlier that we are taking a tenants-first approach. However, we also know that the surrounding neighbors and community will be very interested on what will happen on these properties. We look forward to engaging with organized community and business groups, as well as interested community members, and seeking feedback from nonprofits and others who provide services in the area. We've put some words to describe the vision for the project, which we hope will inspire people, using the idea that both properties will be revitalized into strong communities that existing and future residents will be excited to call home. There are three key themes that we want to share with people and use as a guide for our engagement program. One is providing a range of housing for diverse needs, including a mix of affordable and market housing. Secondly, creating new, modernized housing. And thirdly, supporting a sense of community and a pride of place. We hope that many people participate in this exciting project. And we also know that there's some work to do with respect to providing information, that we know that people provide their input in different ways, and that we are eventually going to consult and require very specific feedback on the design concepts. And what you see on this slide here is us starting to map out the different types of engagement and feedback that we're going to be soliciting, or information that we're going to be sharing. To support all of those different objectives, we have planned for a variety of engagement methods. As mentioned earlier, we have made updates to the existing project website and set up dedicated project emails and phone numbers for each property. In August, we hosted tenant meet and greets to introduce the project team and to provide an early opportunity for residents to ask questions. Also, as part of our initial communication, we sent out letters to both the tenants and the neighbors, informing them of the upcoming project and providing them with avenues to reach out to the project team. Future plans include communicating and engaging in a variety of different ways, including community walks and surveys, printed communications, meetings, drop-in sessions, and social media. We are really looking forward to the contributions of our project coordinator, who is a member of the Christine Lomond-Normandy-Nevis community. We've been fortunate on other projects when we have hired local community members to help guide us in our communications approach, participate in events, and share their local knowledge with us to enrich the feedback that we get throughout the process. We are thrilled to be kicking off this engagement process. We look forward to the responsibility of sharing the community's feedback with the design consultant, so that the community's vision is reflected in the final revitalization plan. And we are, once again, honored to be a part of such an important project for the region. We're very happy to answer any questions today, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We have some questions for you. We'll start with Counselor Brenner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your excellent presentation. Having experienced firsthand the redevelopment in the Toronto community housing portfolios prior to my retirement, I had an opportunity to observe what worked, what didn't work, in particular, some of the positive stuff in the Daniels. I wanted to ask you a couple of questions based on my own past experiences to see whether or not you're going to be looking at it. Number one was, are you looking at any type of securing outreach workers that would be able to do on-the-ground work? I know that you did address the plan, but more specifically, outreach workers that will be able to work one-on-one during the transition period to help the residents understand in particular, and to be part of this positive move.
So that isn't something that is part of the community engagement program. I don't know if the Housing Corporation themselves have undertaken that type of work in the past, or are considering it for this project, but specifically, we haven't discussed that with staff, but I think certainly, Alyssa, I don't know if you want to add, but yeah.
Yeah, so we have already started engaging our tenants. In the process of moving out, we do have housing coordinators with the Durham Regional Local Housing Coordinator that works one-on-one with tenants who have additional needs or support needs to make sure they're referred to the right individuals, and also get them connected to services and help them understand this process. It is a big process.
Thank you. Second question would be, are you looking at any of the best practices for community engagement that were used, in particularly the Regent Park portfolio redevelopment, I think Sparrow Ways, Lawrence Heights, and the impending Driftwood?
So certainly, and I think we're drawing a lot, actually, we led the community engagement process for Phases Four and Five for Regent Park, and...
That looks familiar.
So certainly, actually, we're pulling a lot from that particular, those particular examples of work that we did there. And then also, we always like to look at best practices of what others have done, and so not only work that we've done in our own portfolio, both on private sector and public sector, rental replacement, but then also good examples of what other people have done as well. So integrating that has certainly been a part of our thinking.
If there's anything I can do, reach out and happy to assist. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kirk?
Thank you, Chair, and through you to the presenters. Good morning, by the way. Thank you for your presentation. I really liked the process that you've outlined. I really liked the level of community engagement. I just have one question to do with the community walks. What are those? Where do they go, and what's the purpose? I have not come across that one, so please answer the question, if you will.
Absolutely, and through the chair. It's something that we use a lot as a way of genuinely walking with people around their community and their neighborhood, where we ask them to point out things to us. What do you like about your community? What do you not like? What do you think works well? What are some of the things that you think of when you see this particular spot, or things like that? And often, what we do to kind of kick that off is, instead of telling people, well, we're going to take this route, but actually is to have maps, and the first thing we do is get people to, ask them to sort of star for us on a map, what they might want to show us, and then we create a route from that. And so we can have different groups taking different routes, providing different types of feedback and information, but what it really does is help us to understand what are things in their community that are important to them, what are things that they like, and it can be within the bounds of the site, it can be extended far beyond that. But really, to get that type of input of how we can, you know, how do you move through your neighborhood in a day, and how might we want to recreate that, or how might we want to improve that in a future plan? And it's a really, really great way to get people to tell us different types of information.
Thank you. I would imagine some of the things they tell you might fall outside of your purview, so when you come across information like that, what do you do that, do you have a feedback loop to the region or the municipality?
Yes, and so I think, you know, with the staff team that we are working with, any input that did fall outside of what our mandate is on this particular project, we would ensure that we communicated that back to staff, for them to either manage themselves or take to the appropriate person, because actually, that happens not only with a community walk, but any type of community engagement process where, you know, people share what they want to share, and so we get lots of information. And so certainly, we would ensure that we were able to direct that back to staff to manage.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Chair. That's it.
Thank you. Any other member of council with questions? Online, Mr. Clerk? Just one quick question, well, a couple. Because the one site is so large, are you bringing a discussion around daycare to that conversation?
That isn't something that we are at that stage yet, in terms of what types of future uses might be accommodated on the various sites. So I think we're really at the earliest of stages, and then going forward and thinking with the design consultant about what could be accommodated, both in terms of built form and types of uses, is probably something we're going to learn through this process.
And the other part is, there's built design, and then there's environment design. Will you be looking at, I know that in some communities, community gardens are a great attraction within the space to bring the community together, and, you know, anytime you can build a pollinator garden, it's a good thing.
Absolutely, and exactly that is the type of feedback that we're hoping to get in this early stage, of what would people like to see. We've, you know, in our earliest of discussions with the residents on both sites, they've started to, as we've told them the types of things that we'd like to talk about as we go through this process, they've started to give us some ideas about community space on the sites, what kinds of activities they might like, what they don't think is working now, and programming. So I think that's all part of this input that we want to gather, to then think ahead to creating those design concepts.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and those are the questions, so have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, everybody, for having us today, and we're really looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to 4.2. Tanya Turner, Principal Turner Consulting Group, about the Durham Region Equity Audit.
Good morning, everyone.
Just one second, Allison. Now your mic's on.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I would like to welcome this morning Tana Turner from Turner Consulting Group to speak with you about the equity audit that was recently completed here at the region.
Okay, thank you so much for having me. My pleasure to be here. If you go to the next slide. Just by way of introduction, I just want to give some background with respect to the work I've done. I've been working in the field of equity since 1987, and worked at that time with the Ontario Public Service to develop employment equity legislation, and then implement employment equity in the Ontario Public Service. Since the repeal of provincial employment equity legislation, I've been an independent consultant, and basically doing employment equity work. The demographics have continued to change, societies continue to change, and certainly, I've worked with many organizations to look at their workforce, their organizational culture, as well as service delivery, in order to better serve a diverse community. So to date, I've completed over 70 equity audits, and certainly have worked with other municipalities and other public sector organizations in Durham region. So, next slide. So with respect to the work we did for the equity audit, it includes a review of human resource policies and practices through an equity lens, and certainly key to that is compliance with equity-related legislation. As an employer, Durham region has a duty to comply with the Ontario Human Rights Code, the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act, and certainly, there are also elements of the Occupational Health and Safety Act. And we are looking at policies and practices also to assess whether they support the hiring and advancement and full inclusion of employees from diverse backgrounds. We also assess organizational culture and work environment, and then make recommendations to address the identified issues. With respect to data collection methods, then, certainly, we review your documents, policies, practices, any written material, and we do a 360 review, then, right? Oftentimes, organizations have beautifully written policies that don't necessarily get implemented, or not implemented in the right way. So we do as much as we can to assess whether what you say you do on paper is actually done, and how it's done in the organization. So we also pull staffing files to look at how you hire, and certainly, review a sampling, a random sampling of these files, consult with employees through an online survey, focus groups, speak also with managers through, again, focus groups, online survey, and conduct one-on-one telephone interviews with senior leaders, speak with HR, human resource staff, as well as unions. So with respect to just the overall highlights of the data, we reviewed 72 policies and documents, reviewed 40 job competition files, held focus groups in which 85 employees participated, had 800 staff respond to the survey, and they provided 191 pages of comments to the survey, and that resulted in 86 recommendations. So in total, about 16% of the region's staff did participate in this process, which gives us good insight into their work environment and organizational culture, and certainly their perspectives about diversity, equity, inclusion at the region. So with respect to the findings, with respect to diversity overall, certainly, what we found was that the region could do more to strengthen hiring practices, in order to hire the best person for the job, in order to diversify the staff that you do hire, and certainly, in order to benefit from the rich diversity of the region, and to better serve the diversity of the communities that you serve. What, certainly, one thing we found, and we do highlight some of the strengths that we find in this process, was a really good and strong HR policies and practices. So I do commend the region on some really good work there, but certainly, what we did find is that it could be strengthened, right? So certainly, more can be done to diversify the applicant pool through outreach recruitment. There's also a need in your hiring process to strengthen your compliance with the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act. There are very specific requirements of the Act, which certainly, you could do more to ensure that you're in alignment with. Changes can be made to the process to support it, to become more bias-free, which means reducing barriers, and also closely, more closely tying assessment of candidates with their skills and abilities to do the job. Credential barriers can be removed as well, and certainly, in a tightening labor market, what many organizations are doing, if the educational requirement isn't legislated by law, or isn't a requirement due to, you know, specific operational needs, they're looking at an equivalent of education and work experience, and certainly, too, that reduces barriers for some groups as well. And when we spoke to employees, they raised concerns about nepotism and favoritism in the hiring process, and certainly, what we heard is, while there's a good formal process, it's not always followed by hiring managers. A number of employees spoke about a culture of entitlement, that two regional jobs among white employees, and they feel that their, they, their friends, their family are entitled to jobs, and when racialized people are hired into those roles, there is a sentiment that it's because of, quote, "diversity quotas," or, and certainly, too, we heard that people are ostracized, excluded, or even threatened if they do take a role, or get a role that somebody feels is, was somebody else's position. Certainly, too, we heard that employees had different perspectives of the hiring process, right? So while members of the equity-seeking groups felt that there were biases and issues to fair hiring, we heard from some white women and men that they believed that the process is completely free of bias and that there are no issues. So you've got competing perspectives, and certainly, not necessarily always a good understanding that members of the equity-seeking groups do experience barriers and biases in the hiring process. So certainly, there's a need to not only strengthen the process, but also address employees' perceptions, right? That it is, you know, both the perception that it's completely bias-free, and address the concern that hiring is relationship-based and not merit-based. Okay? And in the full report, there are quotes from employees themselves, just to highlight some of the concerns that they have raised. This quote, "Youth, specifically summer students, are competing for such a limited number of spots. The spots that are available are oftentimes offered to family or friends of Durham region staff." And this was a sentiment we heard over and over and over again, and certainly, we do know the importance of first jobs in supporting people's careers, and certainly, you know, speaks to the need for fair competitions that assess people based on their skills and abilities for the job, for all your jobs, right, from summer student positions throughout. And the next quote, "It's amazing that you..." And the next quote, "It's amazing the degree of nepotism that exists at the region and how well, and how well staff hired through nepotism advance through management positions." So again, um, you know, strong sentiment that we heard from staff, and, um, this quote speaks to not just nepotism impacting hiring, but, um, the career, um, the careers of some people as well. So with respect to equity, um, as I said, we reviewed all your human resource policies, and, um, certainly one thing we identified is the region needs to continue to strengthen its policies and ensure alignment with the Ontario Human Rights Code. But certainly there are gaps in your policy framework that need to be closed, which means the, um, development of, um, of a few new policies, and we've identified, uh, some of them there. Okay? Um, one issue that, um, came up, um, um, for a number of employees was, was with respect to accommodation, and this is something we've seen, um, more and more since the pandemic. Organization, employers have a duty to accommodate based on any human rights-protected ground, um, and, um, the Human Rights Commission has provided a lot of guidance with respect to how accommodation is to be provided, um, the, um, the extent of the accommodation, and they use the terms, um, um, accommodation needs to be provided short of undue hardship, and there's a specific definition there, they provide principles of accommodation, et cetera. And what we heard from employees is that, um, this guidance from the commission, um, isn't always, um, followed. So, um, employees shared that, um, accommodation isn't always provided. When it's provided, they, some describe the process as horrible, confusing, cumbersome, embarrassing, humiliating, right? So it's not a process that, um, they felt that they were supported and treated with dignity and respect throughout. Um, some say they requested accommodation and it was denied. Um, and, um, significant is also, particularly for persons with disabilities, if they don't get the accommodation, that could actually worsen their disability, force them to take, um, disability leave, um, and certainly it doesn't support them to be effective, um, employees and, and provide their best to the organization. Some employees felt that, um, if it's a physical disability, you know, we're more likely to be accommodated, more challenging if it's a mental health disability. Um, and certainly too, uh, employees felt that, um, there's a lack of understanding of the duty to accommodate, it's a long process to receive accommodation, and again, um, can contribute to the worsening of their disability, and for some, there was a fear of requesting accommodation, even though it's a legal, um, obligation for the organization to provide accommodation. Some feared that, um, disclosing that they have a disability would negatively impact relationships with their colleagues, with managers, um, or it could negatively impact their career. Some of the quotes, um, right, some, as I said, people, um, described it as, um, as, you know, horrible experience, um, they made me go back to my doctor to reword the kind of activities I couldn't do because of my disability, they made sure I couldn't work any overtime due to my request for accommodation, right? So that speaks to this person's feeling of being punished for requesting accommodation. The next quote, "I was not accommodated according to my physician's recommendations," and certainly oftentimes it's a negotiation about the best accommodation to be provided to the employee, but this person says, "My manager stated that he did not agree with my, my doctor's recommendations," right? And this isn't, um, um, certainly this isn't the process that should be followed at the region, um, so certainly, um, um, managers' understanding of the duty to accommodate and the supports available to the region are, um, need to be reinforced. And certainly the last quote, um, they played favoritism with who's allowed the accommodation and who, who isn't, right? The better friends you are with management and the union, the more likely you are to receive accommodation. So even though all employees have the same rights to accommodation, um, employees shared that they don't always have access, um, depending on who you are and your relationship with your manager. We also asked, um, employees about inclusion, their feelings of inclusion, um, their experiences of harassment and discrimination, um, and what we heard, um, certainly was that, um, employees, um, witnessed and/or experienced, um, both overt or subtle harassment and discrimination. The majority of survey respondents reported that they have heard or witnessed subtle insensitive comments or behaviors in the past three years. Many, um, also reported having heard or witnessed overt harassment or discrimination. And certainly about one-third of the equity-seeking groups reported experiencing harassment or discrimination in the past, um, three years. So certainly there is room, um, to, um, not only foster a more inclusive organization and, but certainly in the best of organizations, there's going to be incidents of harassment and discrimination. The question is what's the organization's response? Are managers equipped to deal with it when it does occur? And certainly, um, employees shared that, um, that these issues aren't always addressed. Next slide. So, as, um, some employees shared, right, for this employee, most, um, of the harassment or discrimination has been in the form of jokes or passing comments that are not directed at anyone in particular, but certainly these comments, um, whether they intend to harm or they're just ignorant comments, or somebody may have thought the joke was funny, it certainly impacts people's work environments and their feelings of, um, inclusion, um, and being welcomed in that workspace. The next quote, "I've told my immediate management team about the harassment and have had witnesses to these incidents and nothing was done." I was told to take it. So again, what is the response? There's a legal obligation under the Human Rights Code to, um, proactively foster a welcoming and inclusive work environment, but also to address issues of harassment and discrimination when they do occur. And the next quote, again, bullying exists and absolutely, um, nothing is ever done about it, right? So certainly, um, work there with respect to, um, foster an inclusive work environment. We also heard from, um, and you can see from the quotes, that there were some, um, staff who are members of the equity-seeking groups that really lacked confidence that their complaint of harassment or discrimination would be fairly investigated. So they are not coming forward, right? So while some of the quotes, people talked about coming forward with complaints, um, some say, you know, um, I'm just gonna live with it. And certainly, um, research tells us that when inappropriate behaviors aren't addressed, they actually worsen, they don't just go away. A number shared that when told about harassment or discrimination, as I said, their manager or human resources did not act to stop inappropriate behaviors, um, and, um, and they felt, uh, some of them felt that the impact of making a complaint is actually worse than the harassment themselves. So they fear, um, again, the impact on working relationships, they are concerned about their careers, um, if they do make a complaint, um, and certainly, um, you know, a number of employees said they would rather live with the harassment than with, um, um, any impact of coming forward with a complaint. But certainly in the consultations too, um, the majority of, um, employees shared support for the region's diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, they welcomed, um, this work and certainly, um, wanted to see change, um, they personally saw the value of DEI to the organization, they see the organization's commitment and certainly want this work to continue. We did hear from, um, a small number, but still their, um, comments were, were concerning about resistance to the region's DEI efforts, um, that, um, certainly we've made recommendations around education and training in order to address those. We've also made some recommendations with respect to, um, sharing the report, um, with, um, with staff, and certainly if you are asking employees to come on a journey of, um, diversity, equity, and inclusion, they need to understand why, right? What are the issues? Why is this important? You know, to me, why is it important to the organization? We've also made recommendations, um, that, um, the organization use the 86 recommendations to create an equity, um, strategy, that employees be regularly updated on the, um, implementation of that strategy, and, um, and certainly then in about five years, the organization reflect, um, through another staff census and equity audit to assess its progress. Okay? So that is my brief, um, overview of the, um, the report that you've received, and certainly happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. We have a number of counselors with questions. Uh, first in the request box is Counselor Lee.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, would it be appropriate to move the report up as well to deal with both questions at once? I have some questions for the report and some for the presentation, but could we amalgamate them?
Uh, how about questions to this and immediately when the questions are done, we'll advance the report.
No problem, thank you. Um, and thank you very much for this, uh, detailed presentation, it's, it shows a, a gap, so to speak. Um, so just, um, from your experience and I, I was, on your website, you guys have done over 70 equity audits, how does Durham Region stack up? Are we kind of more deficient than others, actually doing better than others?
You're about average.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Certainly there are organizations that haven't even begun this work, right? So, uh, you're ahead of them, right? There are some who've been doing this work for decades, right? And, um, and certainly the ones who are doing really well, they don't call me.
Right.
So I don't know, right? But certainly in terms of the, um, um, the organizations I've, um, conducted equity audits for, um, I didn't hear some of the horror stories that I've heard in other organizations. Um, so certainly there are some good things happening and some really strong managers. The challenge for you is how do we spread that and bring everybody up to that level?
So some of my key, um, observations are regarding the hiring and selection statistics, which were, um, incredibly disappointing, to be blunt. How do you account for the disconnect? So we have certain groups disproportionately thinking that we are utilizing, like you said, diversity quotas, and we don't have this problem, when one only needs to look around the room and you would see that we clearly do have that problem. How do you account for that kind of disconnect? Like, people thinking that, you know, uh, people with accessibility issues or digitis can easily get a job at the Durham Region, um, what would make them think that? Like, how, could, could you kind of use that mindset?
I, I don't know. Um, and, you know, people, so the members of the equity-seeking groups understand the challenges of getting a job here, many people feel you need to have a connection in Durham Region to actually get a job at Durham Region, um, and so I think they are more, um, they have a better understanding of the challenges, right? And if you don't have those challenges, you think it's a fair process, right? Um, and, and without the education, people only have their own experience, the experience of their friends to, um, to reflect on, and that's why I said education's really important, because people need to understand that your experience isn't the experience of other people, and there are true barriers, um, to getting a job, um, at the region and advancing in the organization.
Was there ever the, um, idea of retaliation of just like, oh, if I report this, then things are gonna come back to me worse? I mean, you know, like, I think you mentioned people fearing for losing their job, error of not reporting things.
Yeah.
Is there, you know, I, I was reading through the recommendations, how do you properly capture that idea? You know, like, do, do you get a sense that our employees feel comfortable going to HR for HR issues?
I think some do, but some don't, and I didn't, um, and it's hard sometimes because people have perceptions that may not be based on reality, right? Or it could be based on one person's experience and that story gets told over and over and over again. I don't think we had a strong sense that somebody said, that people, many people said, "I went to HR or I made a complaint and this is, this is the retaliation I experienced," right? But there's a sense that they will experience retaliation, which is just as strong, um, as if something did happen, because people are fearful of coming forward.
Of course.
Right?
Uh, is there any, uh, fix for the HR side? There's a lot of, like, uh, Durham Region organizational changes we can make, but just in terms of making our HR more approachable, making our HR, like, is there any kind of fixes we can do?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And certainly we've shared some of that information with HR, um, because if employees don't feel they can come forward with issues, then they fester and get worse.
That's a serious, yeah, a serious gap.
Yeah.
Again, thank you for all the work you've done, it is absolutely eye-opening and hopefully the region can change for the better because of it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Mayor Schumer?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair, through you. I, I, I was very disappointed to see this, uh, this report, um, and, and your presentation. If you had to grade, uh, this audit, um, what grade would you give it?
That's a hard question, um...
Not good?
Um, but, see, because you've got, um, competing things happening, right? You've got really strong policies, really strong practices, so what you say you do on paper looks really good, it's, it, there's a disconnect between that and what's actually happening in the organization, right? So it's a mixed review, um, certainly what you need to strengthen is the practice, right? That people are...
But that's the thing, right? A, a lot of organizations ha, can have great policies, they can have great things to say that they're doing, but, uh, you know, when the rubber meets the road and you're having to be held up to those policies. Um, I'm getting the suspicion here that the grade would not be very good, so if you're a little uncomfortable with answering that question, I'll, I'll let you off the hook. I think, uh, uh, I can, I can read through your expression that it would not be a good You, you, uh, you mentioned that, uh...
Mayor Schumer? Uh, initially in, in the comments that, uh, were made during the development is that Durham, um, is, uh, somewhere in between all the other groups, the 70 that you've looked at. So, um, you know, I, I, your comments are your comments, but they're not, I don't want you to put the comments that you're putting forward to make it seem like they're coming from the person presenting today.
Very well.
Thank you.
You mentioned, uh, in your, in your summary about the resistance to, uh, inclusion efforts. Can you just elaborate on that? What exactly that resistance, uh, was or, or how you saw that resistance taking shape?
So first of all, what we've seen in the past three years is consistent language So first of all, what we've seen in the past three years is consistent language across organizations with respect to resistance. That this work is not about inclusion, it's about exclusion. And particular other phrases that we're seeing being picked up by, by individuals across organizations. I think for some, there's simply a lack of understanding of this work, right? They don't, if they don't understand that there are barriers that the equity seeking groups face, then they don't understand why you need to do this work, right? So certainly a lack of understanding. They already think it's a fair process, so why are we doing this? And certainly I think there's an ideological resistance that we heard as well to, to equity work. So it's taking different forms. And certainly then, I think education and a restatement of the organization's commitment to this work is certainly going to be needed.
It's recommended that essentially there be a follow-up in, in five years. Essentially another audit, you know, additional or follow-up surveys. Personally, I, I look at this and think, my gosh, I'm not sure if I want to wait five years to see if we're getting the ship turned around. And I know, you know, these, dealing with a lot of these issues is, is not easy, is not fast. Is there anything you would recommend that be done that we can measure progress here sooner than a five-year period?
And certainly in developing a strategy, there's going to be indicators that are going to be developed as well. So whether or not you've actually implemented the recommendations is going to be important, but also what impact that change has had. There are some organizations that take a checkbox approach. We've done this, we've done this, we've done this, but it hasn't led to change, right? It's the change that you want to measure and certainly you will be able to, through employee engagement surveys and other exit surveys, other things that you do on a regular basis, you'll be able to assess change. Can I just say?
Okay.
Organizational change takes time, right? And it's not just changing a policy, it's changing attitudes and behaviors. So that's why we say about a five-year period because it, it's, you need the time for that change to happen before you can see it in, in another equity audit.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that reasoning. And if this was 10, 15 years ago, I would say, yep, you know, we've, we've got some new policies and practices that we're bringing in, let's make sure it happens. But the, my concern, I guess, with that, with that question was that these, as you've stated, these practices and policies have already been in place and you would think that, you know, adequate work would have been done to ensure we didn't end up with results like this. So I'm really hoping that we don't have to wait five years for some indication that the work we're going to do is actually going to have an impact. So I want to thank you very much for doing this work and bringing this situation to light because it obviously indicates we've got, got some significant work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Mayor Foster.
If I may, Chair, through you, I just wanted to respond quickly to a couple of the things that the mayor mentioned. It's important that we apply the lens that this is new work that we're doing and we've never done this work before. So employees haven't had the opportunity to speak up and speak to their own truth and their experience. So inasmuch as it's difficult to read and, you know, we have to be mindful that we don't, we don't apply a grade because we're doing the work. And so that is one of the important pieces of this is that we are looking at our policies, we are reviewing, we are working very closely, the diversity, equity and inclusion division is working very closely with human or human resources partners to apply timelines, to apply, to identify actions and interventions, to look at how we approach this because we're looking to change culture. And as Tana mentioned, it takes time. So, you know, are there, are there concerns, are there issues, are there areas that we have to look at to ensure that we're applying an equity and inclusive lens to it? Absolutely. And it's never easy to see it on paper, but I think we have to remember that by being here and doing this work and doing this equity audit, that we're moving along and doing the work. So I just wanted to say that because I don't want it to come across like this is all bad because it's not. There's work that we're doing, there are areas that are problematic, absolutely, as in any organization, but there's also work that has begun and that is ongoing and we will be coming back to you regularly with updates as to, you know, how we're applying the, how we're responding to recommendations, the work that we're doing and the metrics that we're developing for it. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I am going to speak very carefully so I don't get myself into, into trouble, but a, a couple of, a couple of questions. I have a love-hate relationship with, with policy. We've all been involved in, in organizations where you get into nitty gritty and sometimes unnecessary policy. And I'm hearing that we, that we have good policy procedure. I didn't see anything speaking to policy on accommodation. And I've, 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 I've got to wonder if there is a lack of understanding of the responsibility of the organization versus what is, is reasonably expected by an employee. So, you know, is there work that we can do that everyone comes to the table on the same page? Or are we doing it and I just didn't see it in the report?
And what you have before you is the summary report. There is a full hundred and something page report that you will...
Thank you for the summary.
We did, sorry, and I can't recall, but we did review around, with respect to an accommodation policy and made, we would have made recommendations for that.
Okay. Speaking to, and Counselor Lee brought it up and it, it comes into perception and we've all heard the, the line that perception is reality. So if you are a white male or a white female, your, your, your reality is very different. You're speaking to education in that, and, and we do need to be educated. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in this report I had no idea was an issue at all. Are there recommendations in terms of, of how we do that education, which really speaks to, to changing culture, which as we've noted is hard? So how, how do we educate? Are there recommendations in that, in tackling the problem instead of just recognizing it?
The recommendations are broader around you need to educate, right? Managers need to understand their legal obligations and employees need to understand their rights to accommodation, harassment and discrimination free workplace and their role in creating, you know, a welcoming and inclusive work environment. We didn't specify, you know, that these are the specific courses that you need or that will be the responsibility of the DEI division and HR to work out those details.
Thank you. Mayor Foster, our CIO would like to respond.
Thank you. I just wanted to jump in because while we've been waiting for the equity audit, we have, we have not been standing still. So we do have a series of mandatory training that every single employee, frontline right up to senior management must complete prior to the end of the year that addresses a number of these issues. We also put our senior leadership team through extensive training provided by Rotman, the Rotman School of Business. And finally, the region had never in the past brought together its managers and we started to get the sense that really the block from the leadership team to really getting some of these messages and requirements across was at the manager level. So this year we began bringing our managers together. We had two sessions with them in the summer and we have two sessions with them, I believe, next week or the week after, where we're addressing many of these issues. And the session next week will very much focus on the equity audit. So we are trying to get ahead of it, but we know we have a ways to go and the findings from the audit are very informative. I've talked to Allison and we will have somebody dedicated to overseeing implementation of the recommendations.
Thank you for that. And Mr. Chair, you know, language is, is a difficult thing. So, so I don't want to, I'm, I'm, I'm not being critical or assuming and certainly in the report prepared by staff, there are, you know, many boxes showing what you're doing. I'm, I'm just curious particularly for, again, I'm dancing on words here, for privileged groups that do not, do not understand that they're privileged. You know, perception is reality and you can generate a tremendous degree of, of anger. I think we are seeing that more broadly in society today. So I'm, I'm just concerned as to how we, how we tackle that side of things. So thank you, I'm hearing that we are. Again, on, on this, and while it might have been beyond your scope, I, I'm going to describe it as, as cultural silos. You know, so did you, did you do any data splits to, and there's, there's a, there's a reason that I'm asking this, did you do any data splits to identify those areas that we are doing well in? And, and you have recognized, you know, that, that we've got some really good managers. That, that's a quote that I heard and wrote down because it was, it was nice to hear. But are, are we identifying those areas that we need to do additional work on and, and focus efforts?
Areas, you mean by department and division?
Whatever the data split might be, yes.
Yeah. We didn't ask, we didn't do the breakdown that way because we recognize that employees are going to be hesitant. We did ask demographic data, right? So if I'm the only or one of the few black women in a particular department and I'm identifying these characteristics and the department, how honest am I going to be? Right? So there's a hesitancy for people and we wanted the complete honesty of folks. So we, we, we had to be careful with respect to how much of that information we did ask, right? But we do know that there is a difference between departments because of the type of work, the composition, et cetera, and that's going to be additional, certainly additional work in order to get a sense of where there are pockets that need more attention.
So I would suggest respectfully, that if we don't recognize those really good managers, if I were one of those good managers and saw this presentation, I would feel utterly defeated. And, and I don't know how we do that, but we've, we've got to recognize where we are failing, but I think we also need to recognize and celebrate where we're succeeding. And that wasn't a question. My apologies, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you Chair, and I must say I greatly appreciate your presentation this morning. When I first received it and read through it, I was deeply concerned. And then I took a step back and I reread and I tried to put things into a question of scale. So you mentioned that there were over 800 respondents, which is huge frankly, I think you said 60%. Would you say that the comments that we were all shown today and which I read previously were a summation of many that said something similar or were they one-off statements that, that stood out? And that doesn't lessen my concern, I just would like to know what the question of scale is that we're dealing with here. Can you, can you actually answer that? And if you can, please.
What we pulled out, and, and you'll probably get a better sense of this from the full report, those quotes are examples of themed issues, right? So we recognize the theme of accommodation, issues with accommodation and pulled out quotes that demonstrated what was happening for folks. Okay? And it's hard to get a sense of scale, but that's why too, we use the, the graphs to summarize so you can get a sense of how many people are experiencing harassment and what does it look like, what does it feel like for them, right? And that's when we pull out the quotes.
Okay. So it's not a case of 15 comments and here's an example of one. It's hard to qualify that or quantify that, I guess.
Yeah. But it's, it's, so we're not just pulling, like if somebody said a one-off comment about something that was, you know, I don't know, even if it was horrendous, we're not going to pull out that one because it was one. We're looking for what are the themes of what's happening in this organization? So a theme is lack of accommodation. We'll break that down and, and pull out some quotes that highlight and give you, help you understand what's happening, right? But we're not pulling out one-offs.
I think I'd like to see the whole report and I thank you for this summary. As I say, it is concerning. I hear about the policies that we have at the region, I support them 100%, but it is concerning to see that in some, many, a few cases, they're not being followed. I share Mayor Foster's comment that, you know, how do we celebrate where we're doing well in a case like this without taking the same paintbrush and painting everybody with the same kind of paint? So, and I did have a second question, but Mayor, Chair, but Mayor Schumer asked it about the, the five-year time period. I think your response was understandable. I, I think I'd like, would have liked to have seen like an interim. It just seems like there needs to be a report coming back sooner because of the nature of the comment. Personally, I'd like to see something sooner. If that can be done, I would support that and I certainly support the policies as written. I just would obviously like to see a bit better application. Thank you very much. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Brenner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And through you to, to Tana, thank you so much for your presentation. Having had the opportunity to, I believe, work with you previously, City of Toronto and Toronto Community Housing, I'm very familiar with your work. The question I'm going to ask you is from the lens that I had as a former managing director for the Office of Diversity, Fairness and Human Rights at Toronto Housing previously. In your report, when you identified, and again, the feelings of the employees that felt that their complaints were not being dealt with, are there feelings that there was risk of reprisal, reprisal or being ridiculed? Obviously, the model that I'm very familiar with is in a dedicated internal investigative process by a specially trained team within an organization, I believe can work. I've seen it in the City of Toronto and I've seen it in the former Toronto Community Housing. So the question that I have has to be, what are your thoughts on the possibility of expanding the work of our own diversity, equity and inclusion division to enable them to be that specially trained team that can get us through the transitional period of change by having the ability to do investigations where there are complaints and be able to provide that lens of expertise that I know that this division does have?
So I think, I think I can help you with that.
Thank you.
That currently we have a process within the region where that is already happening? I can have our CIO comment.
I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I know we do have the process within the region that I am familiar with, but I'm asking thoughts of a change in that model a bit.
With respect to a change in the model, I think I will probably defer to Allison, but you should know that our diversity, equity and inclusion unit does undertake investigations in confidence. I don't even hear about them until it gets to the point where perhaps disciplinary action is required. So they are quite skilled in that respect. But Allison, is there anything that you would like to add with respect to changes that could improve the delivery of that service?
We, DEI works very closely with human resources and as the Chair mentioned, there is the, there is the group, the Labor Relations Group, and we do have regular conversations around, you know, cases that may be ongoing and how we can inform each other, how we can partner, how DEI can support at the front end, but also at the, at the other end, when there is a finding, how we support with education, how we support with information and referral processes. So at this point right now, it's not, I don't think that's something that we are exploring because we do have this process in place and it's, it's, it's working. I believe that there are folks on the team as well who do have a human rights background. So...
I guess the more direct question would be, do you have trained investigators in your unit or division?
In the DEI?
Correct. Which is, that's the model that I'm, I was asking about.
It was usually more in a human rights office that we see that we have trained investigators, not necessarily in DEI divisions. Tana, you can correct me.
Yeah. Can I just add though, I think you need to separate your human rights investigation. They're investigating this incident, this incident... They're investigating this incident, this incident, this. DEI is looking at systemic change. And you don't want those folks overwhelmed with looking at individual issues. They need to be informed, right? Because if there's a trend, they then can address it. But I think you want the systemic change, right? So you don't have as many individual issues.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Shahid. Push your button again, please. Hit your request again, please. Okay, there you go.
Thank you so much through you, Chair Henry. Tana, I really appreciate you starting this conversation and for our department to actually do this one-of-a-kind thing. I think it's about time. To my question, the 83, 86 recommendation, I know we will talk about it when the report comes, but in your presentation, 86, will you be filtering those when you come back in five years and see how many of them have been applied?
If I may, through the Chair, I could start Counselor Shahid. Our approach is that we are going to work very closely with Human Resources. We're going to take the recommendations. We have started. I'm working closely with the Commissioner to review the recommendations, to identify the areas that we have actually already actioned, and some of them are noted in the report. We're looking at the interventions and the actions that will be needed to support those recommendations. We're identifying where resources are required, and we're looking at timelines that we will action these. So when will they be completed? So we're breaking it down. And what we've done, and you'll see in the report, is that we've categorized them in different areas. So some of them are very policy-specific, some of them are, you know, DEI-specific. So that's what we're doing. So my hope is that as we do that, we will come back to you regularly, whether it be biannually, to say, here's where we are, here's how we've, we're actually measuring, here's what we've accomplished. And maybe we develop some sort of, some way to either go back to staff or to engage with other partners to say, you know, are you seeing the change? You know, what is shifting in the culture? What is shifting in the way that folks may feel comfortable coming forward with concerns without any worries of retaliation? So DEI, when we talk about equity and inclusion, it's one of those abstract pieces that, you know, it's not easy to measure culture change, right? And so one of the things that we're doing as we're implementing education, whether it be or informal education through our Let's Talk sessions, is that we're providing surveys so that we can capture that and we can pull that together and we can quantify, you know, what is changing? How are we measuring, you know, perception? How are we measuring, you know, this, you know, concerns about whether folks have privilege or not, right? The modules, the foundational modules that we have, one of the modules is specifically on privilege, to answer Mayor Foster's question. So we're looking at that shift in that what is changing, you know, understanding? Is there knowledge transfer? And is there behavior change in recognizing the harm, right, of exclusion, of discrimination, of harassment, of racism? So we will come back, you know, we'll identify, we'll build that together, we'll come back to you, we'll share that with you, we'll look for your input, and then we'll continue to do the work towards it.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Henry, we heard from CIO that there are different, through Rotman School, there are many programs that staff has taken. Have you considered LEED Canada?
LEED?
LEED, yes.
Yes. Yes, we actually participated in the LEED process. And right now, what we're doing is identifying, again, you know, the areas that we are already doing work in, the areas that we need to explore. We actually have an improvement plan. And part of the work that we did through LEED resulted in our Project Search Initiative, where you saw at the last meeting, the 10 interns who are now here at the region and gaining work experience through different regional departments. So we are a member, we're actively working. We just had our second follow-up meeting with the Ability Center last week, and we do have an improvement plan in place that looks at all facets of accessibility and active participation through different areas here in the region, in the region's business.
That's fantastic, because I took that course, and I think it was very, very beneficial. So I'm really happy about that. Through you, Chair Henry, I feel change is needed. I'm coming to a question. To sum, it may be disappointing. To me, it is a first step, and I'm very happy about that. Tana, can you please tell me if, just from my knowledge, are you Ontario-wide or Canada-wide?
I was Ontario and now doing work in Manitoba and in Nova Scotia.
That's fantastic.
So branching out, yeah.
That's fantastic. So you're still, through you, Chair Henry, putting us in average, which is a good place to start, in my opinion. No question there.
You're not the worst, and you're nowhere close to the worst.
I'm very happy to hear that. And I'm, I heard it from someone within our Durham region as a resident that our staff or the region or township should be reflective of the makeup of the community. Do you think that is true?
That you should?
Yes. I mean, the answer to me, it's a yes. I know it's a part of your recommendation as well. But what I'm hearing from a lot of people is that our community or our region, our staff, our municipalities, and the staff who work within our municipality should be a reflective or reflection of the community we have.
Yeah. And we did do a census last year and found that there is a gap in representation for some groups, right? So certainly, this focused on the policies and practices in order to help now close those gaps.
Thank you so much. I'll have some questions on the report. Really appreciate you coming out today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Chair, and through you. Thank you for the report. I almost called you Tina.
No, not Tina.
Most of my questions have been asked by Counselor Lee and Mayor Foster, but I have a couple. You've done over 70 of these audits. Have you followed through or revert back to see if any of them have been acted upon or any improvements have been made since your report?
And actually, I was, this past year, invited back to do another equity audit for one organization and assess the implementation of the recommendations. And I'm coming back to another municipality next year to do it as well.
Okay. Because I hate when, I know a lot of these reports get done and they gather dust on the shelf and nothing.
Yeah. And, you know, there's some, I, again, have to commend you because there's some organizations who get the report and say, we don't want to share this with anybody, and it disappears. And they may do the work, but they don't want to admit that there's a problem, right? It's hard to make change if you can't admit that there's a reason why you need to change, right? So absolutely, you're on the, the first good step is to share the report and create that action plan.
Okay. Through you, Chair, and I gather from our CIO that we do recognize there is a problem, and they're doing something to rectify that. During your interviews, have any of the employees ever said that since the institution of DEI here, improvements have been made or things, there's progress, there's some progress, sign of some progress?
Sorry, since what?
Since we have a DEI department here.
Sorry, I have to jog my memory. But I think that certainly folks who've been here a long time, I think there was some recognition that the past few years, there has been change, and it's been different than certainly, you know, 10, 20 years ago. So I think there's a recognition that there is change happening.
One final question. Have any of the employees indicated that they would like to see a more active role in the hiring process by DEI?
I don't think they did. I think they just wanted a fairer process.
Okay. One other question. I know this is endemic, not just to this institution, but to most, if not all municipalities. I can't speak for them. Is there a chance that this report would filter down to municipalities as well, Mr.?
Counselor Anderson?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't think we have a problem sharing at all, and I know Allison meets with all of the local municipalities regularly. The report is very specific to our policies and procedures, but if it's of interest and use to our local partners, we're happy to share it.
I think it might be. Thank you very much.
Yes. And so I just, as Elaine said, we do meet with the municipal counterparts, and we will share it. We have, we have talked about it. We're hoping that there'll be lessons learned there as well for our partners. The other piece I just wanted to mention to respond to Counselor Anderson is that, you know, one of the things that the job seekers who are out there, you know, their, the needs have shifted, their perspective has shifted. You know, one of the things that, you know, folks reach out to ask us is that, you know, you've said you were going to do this. Are you actually doing it? And I think that we will be a better region for this work. You know, it may not look like this right now, reading the report, but this is that first step in that this is the difficult part. I call it the tough part. But now that we've identified what the concerns are, that we can actively work towards it and that we're committed to doing it. Because the people that we will want to attract to the region will hold us accountable to the statements and the policies and all the other pretty things that we have, but that we're actually actioning those pieces. I just wanted to put that out there, to apply that lens to it when we think of this work, is that I think that when we look down the road five years, 10 years, we'll be a better region, and folks will want to be here and want to come and work here because we're actually doing what it is that we said we would do.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. In your presentation, you speak to a number of employees identified a culture of entitlement to regional jobs among white people. So we have what I would assume, folks who are diverse, that have this idea that there is a sense of entitlement. But the next point you speak to in regards to the hiring process, that white women and men are more likely to believe the process is free from bias. So we have this sort of conflict here. How do we begin to change that culture of entitlement and have folks who are in that senior management position start to see? Because they haven't been part of lived experiences. They don't know what it's like to walk through, along someone's journey that is racialized or marginalized. How do we begin to change that? And I understand in government, change is incremental, but I think something like this really has to be done quickly due to the fact that the region's growing and with every new house that we're building, it's not Bill and Dorothy Smith who are moving in as neighbors.
So there are a number of things. Certainly, the entitlement is tied to that nepotism, right? This job is for my relative, I'm going to pass his name on, and I know he's going to get the job. And when that gets disrupted, right now, the impact now is on the racialized person, as people shared, right? I got the job, fair competition. I get the job, and now I'm being ostracized or threatened because I got the job. So a fair hiring process, right? Where people understand it's not about who you know, it's about what you know. And so when people come into those roles, they are seen to be fully qualified for that job, right? And that's going to address some of the challenges that the new folks will face. And it's, so it's that change in that culture shift, too, that we're hiring the best from a broad pool, right? Not just, and in some cases, to, you know, I think there was some concern about, well, we only hire people from Durham region. Or you've got the whole of the Toronto CMA as your labor market, right? And are you hiring the best when you're limiting it to relatives who live in Durham region, right? You can't say you're hiring the best people for the job. So certainly, attitude change, ensuring that it is a bias-free process, that you're hiring based on the skills and abilities to do the job.
Does that mean looking at new HR people to bring in who have that mindset?
I think it's around training and understanding, right? I've done bias-free hiring trainings with HR professionals who've never learned this in school, right? So it is about new learning, new understanding, strengthening your process, and doing this work through an equity lens as well.
So thank you for that. My second question, you speak to youth, specifically summer students that are, that compete for limited amount of spots. Do you feel that there really is a need to create a separate program for racialized Indigenous youth as opposed to possibly reworking the programs that we have?
I think in the staff census, there was a recommendation about a specific program for racialized and Indigenous youth to address that issue. But certainly, both are needed.
My next question, you speak in your presentation about policies to support transgendered employees who may be transitioning at work. What does that look like?
You know, and many organizations now have those policies. There are trans people who may not transition at work. There are trans people who will go through the process of transitioning. So it is certainly one that reflects the needs of the individual employee, because it's all going to be individual. But ensuring that managers have the knowledge, understanding, and able to support the employee, and HR understands too what it could and should be doing to support the employee as well.
So would that look like tweaks to existing policies? Or would we need a whole new policy?
This is a new policy, and it may mean tweaks to other policies. But certainly, what I'm seeing, organizations have whole guides on how to support employees who are transitioning, right? And policies to support that. And we're seeing it more and more now. So before an employee comes forward, and I'm sure an employee already has come forward, and it's, you should have a policy in place so that you're not scrambling at the last minute to understand what's needed and to provide those supports.
You also speak to the lack of understanding of the duty of accommodations, long process to receive an accommodation. And what really is troubling is a fear of requesting an accommodation. I would think, you know, if you have a medical accommodation from a doctor, your manager is not a doctor. You get, you produce medical documentation. I would think that that would be a pretty open and closed case, but it doesn't seem like that from what you're stating.
Right. And this is not unique to this organization, but certainly ableist attitudes. Well, if you have a disability and you need accommodation, that means you can't do your job, right? We need to think, in order for them to do their jobs well, they just need some support, right? And it's not, some people see it as special treatment, right? It is supports to do their job, right? And it's a legal obligation, right? So certainly, you know, we need to just shift our thinking about employees with disabilities. And what we're seeing is an increase in employees with disabilities, an increase with employees with mental health disabilities, right? They're in our workplace. What are we, how are we, you know, what are we doing to ensure we're getting the best from these employees?
And just these points alone, I find disappointing because if the process can be shortened, if the fear of requesting an accommodation is gone, if there's a better understanding of the duty to accommodate, I think we could, the work will improve and will have better outcomes. And so I'm interested to see how we move forward on that. My last question surrounds more of how we go about hiring, how policies- question surrounds more of how we go about hiring, how politicians go about hiring top positions here in the organization. So, you know, if you have a small group of, I'll say mayors, that look to hire a top position, if there is the understanding that there's no bias within the dominant culture, how do we go about improving the type of diverse hires to positions like a CAO?
So number one, certainly you want to increase diversity, but you also want equity competencies, right? Because not everybody has the knowledge and understanding, right? Because you need that to be filtered down in the organization, right? And then, how do you normally hire? Is it through executive search firms? Because if that is, are you including diversity and equity in that, right? Is it a clear requirement of the job? And how are you assessing it?
I would hope so, and I'd like to see that going forward when we continue to hire top positions for the region. Thank you.
Okay.
Just a quick question, too, is that when you do utilize executive firms to bring in for top personalities, it's the process that they apply to bring in the candidate that you need forward to the position that you're looking to fill.
Sorry, say that.
So when you hire an executive firm to bring in a series of candidates, it's the process of the messaging that the executive firm puts out that attracts the candidate?
But you can guide that messaging?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Right? And so are you broadening it to include people from diverse backgrounds with an equity focus? You know, what are the leadership skills you're looking for? That will drive, right? Because if it speaks to me, I will apply. If I feel I'm excluded from that, then I won't apply.
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Chair Henry. Through you, I just have a couple of questions. And before I do that, I'd like to echo Counselor Shahid's comment that this is a positive. This is a baseline we're establishing to move forward. So I do commend the region, and both yourself and Allison, on doing this very important work. I think it's vital to not only our growth in the region, but in our understanding on council and as a business that does employ. So speaking to that, of the 900 respondents out of the 5,500 regional employees, would you say that that is a comparable metric for an organization of our size? And were you satisfied that 900 responded? 900 seems like a really big number, but stacked up against 5,500. Is it? Or is it, again, an average baseline?
Yeah. And with, typically, we see 10% to 20%-ish response, so this is pretty typical. The challenge is, you've got so many outside workers, people who are not at their desk. So it varies when we do these surveys. If you have a workforce that predominantly works at a computer, we tend to see a higher response rate.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Now, we're looking at a five-year projection for redoing this particular audit. During that time, do you see interim surveys going out to measure as policies are put in place to gauge a trajectory of possible improvement, or will it be a summation at the end of that five years?
No, I think it needs to be built in. I think I've made recommendations about exit surveys. So why are people, who's leaving and why, right? Asking questions related to inclusion, related to experience of harassment, will help you understand the work that still needs to happen, right? Because if people are leaving because, you know, for a better opportunity, that's one thing. But if they're being pushed out of the organization, right? When you do employee engagement surveys, there are other opportunities that you'll have to embed some assessment in there.
Right. Thank you for that. And my last question is just looking at, you broke it down into systemic, cultural, and attitudinal barriers. Could you speak a little bit or quantify, perhaps, some of your primary concerns on the responses you received, particularly around unconscious bias? And if there's recommendations within the 86 that you made, that might help us better understand what unconscious bias is, and perhaps key areas that you received from the respondents that really highlight, perhaps, things that need to be addressed first, rather than later?
Sorry, with respect to unconscious bias?
Well, in that grouping that you have of attitudinal barriers, certainly unconscious bias is just one component of that, you know, assumptions, stereotypes.
And that speaks to, right, the systemic change that's needed, and then the individual, right? You know, we've talked about this. You could have the best policies in the world, but if people are coming to the table with their own biases, that's, you're going to result, or end up with biased outcomes. So, as I said, the training is needed for managers and for employees to help them recognize, right, stereotypes that they may have, where they're making assumptions that could negatively impact some groups. But I think it's a combination of both that's going to be needed.
Excellent. Thank you both. That's all my questions. Chair Henry.
Thank you. Mayor Roy.
I hit the button. Thank you very much. And I'm not going to repeat what others have asked, but I do want to thank you very, very much for this. It's very enlightening. And I know in my own work prior that we had done the same, and the first time it came through, it was a little overwhelming, shocking. But even for the reaction of those who are within the workplace, are, I can't believe this is actually happening within our workplace, which leads to the question, and you've already, it's already been stated several times, it's about that perception, but also tolerating and tolerating the action. How are we going to teach that it's okay to say no? That the action is not acceptable behavior. How are we going to teach that to, one, to the individual receiving it, but to the individual doing it?
Yeah. And that would be in, you know, your basic human rights training, right? What's acceptable and not acceptable behaviors in your onboarding. Here are the, our core values. This is what we, how we work together at the region, right? And then the messaging through managers as well. Their own behaviors, right, sends a strong message. And then, are they intervening when they actually see things happen? So I think it's multiple ways that that needs to be done.
Okay. And my second question, it leads into disabilities and requesting accommodation. As a parent of a child who has a disability and who has gone through the education system with an IEP, when you enter into a workforce, there are no IEPs. So how are we changing and transitioning that thought process to allow for the difference of approach to be able to work within the workplace? And in some cases, not doing the work as quickly, but probably more precisely, how are we going to teach accommodation?
Members of council, I'm sorry, you caught me with the IAP. Could you?
Oh, Individual Education Plan.
Thank you.
So if I could start, I think it's important, because it goes back to culture, right? Excuse me. And one of the things that I want to highlight is that when we speak, when we speak to a diverse workforce, we have to remember that it's all of us. Because I think sometimes when we do speak, we think of racialized, or we think of individual, like, you know, folks with disabilities, or, you know, folks with different gender expression. It's all of us. So we all have layers and intersections of identity. And so I think by doing the work and having the conversations and normalizing the conversations that we all belong, and that we're creating space to empower people, so that if you do live with an invisible disability, which our census showed us, you know, given the number of folks who identify as having a disability, 80% identified as living with an invisible disability. So what environment and culture are we creating so people feel comfortable enough disclosing that they do live with a disability, right? It's a significant part of who they are. It should be celebrated. And what are we doing as region, as managers, to ensure that they feel empowered to ask for the accommodations that they need to do their work well? So it's about the culture. It's about the education. Is the normalizing, is the conversations that we will have formally and informally. And we're trying to do that in different ways, so that people feel comfortable asking questions that historically they maybe would have never asked, because they would feel bad asking. So we create the forums and the opportunities for us to have these conversations, because it's important to have, and it's important for people to see themselves as part of it. So our approach in DEI has really been, how do we call in people? We don't want to call out people. We allow people, you know, we support people and allow them grace, as are ourselves as well, because it's heavy lifting and it's heavy work. So it's really giving people that opportunity to ask those uncomfortable conversations, which is why, when we look at the report, inasmuch as it's hard, I'm okay with the uncomfortable, because it gives us somewhere to start off with and to address, right, to respond to and be responsive. So I think it's that shift in culture as we have these conversations. So people feel comfortable to say, this is what I need, and they don't have to hide, you know, parts of themselves. So I always go back to, you know, what are we doing to ensure every one of us can bring all of ourselves to this space? And that is inclusion, right? So they do feel comfortable doing that.
Which brings me to the question through you, Mr. Chair, about that inclusion in that safe place. It's that creation of that safe place that we all, including around this table, need to be focusing on, of what safe is. And recognize actions do create unsafe places, and we need to create that safe place. So, thank you.
Right. And one of the other pieces that we're doing, and Elaine mentioned, that is the work that we're doing for a management group around responding, around recognizing the compliance piece of the OHD, the Ontario Human Rights Code, and the AODA, and all the other legislative pieces, really is helping build that capacity, right, so that they can identify when behaviors are happening, and really being responsive in a timely way, so that folks don't feel like, you know, they're not being listened to, or that, you know, the door, whether it be virtual or physical, isn't open for them to walk into and have the conversation. So let's talk about how we go about doing that and building that capacity. And so that is going to be our focus, you know, with our management group, among other areas as well. But it's really looking at the recommendations, what applies to this group, and how do we build that capacity, you know, to be responsive to those pieces.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And perception is reality. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you so much for the presentation today. Like, as you all say, if you don't measure it, you can't improve it. So I really appreciate the effort and the difficult work. However, at the same time, you know, I'm not here to celebrate average, and that it's a really sobering report highlighting the problems and gaps here at the region. So my question, first question is just, how do we, have you seen other successful examples in other organizations through your audit experience to find ways that you can speed up the culture change? Like, again, five years has been mentioned by a few times. It just seems such a long time before we remeasure that, like, it's longer than a term of council. So have you seen successes in other cultures where they were able to speed up this culture change in a fast way, or a faster way?
I, nothing comes to mind, but, you know, the culture change is the hardest change to make, right? And certainly, it speaks to leadership as well, and pushing that change down in the organization. But certainly, I think that's one of the key things that the organization will need to focus on.
No, and then, fair enough. So I guess I'm, you know, always asking for the simple answer, and it's not always hitting on these difficult challenges. And then, I guess, and again, the same thing around the accommodation piece. So I just, you don't want to have staff that have this fear that if they have accommodation, that they're more afraid, in your own words from the presentation, they're more afraid of the reprisals from making the recommendation than what their accommodation is. So to me, that's really alarming. Do we have other examples of where we've had success allowing people to feel that comfort, that they can come forward through HR, through a different department, through some, maybe even an anonymous way to highlight their concern and see if they can be guided, like some kind of navigator through that process, so that they can do it without fear and without concern, and that their accommodation can be addressed?
Yeah. And I think Allison made the point about normalizing it, right? It's just a normal part of our process. When we, and the AODA is trying to make it part of the process, right? When you're hiring, you should have an accommodation statement. You should ask candidates, when we're inviting them for an interview, do you require any accommodation? It should be in the job offer. It should be part of management conversations with new employees. It should be an ongoing process, right? So certainly embedding it into everything that you do, so that it just becomes a normal part of the conversation.
No, I appreciate that. It's, again, a difficult challenge. Then my last question, so when are we going to see an update on this, on our next steps, on our pieces, and maybe it's more towards Allison there, so that we can measure our success in our march towards excellence?
And we started that in the report, where we identified some of those early and quick wins, so that you see that. And I'm thinking in the new year, Barb, if you can, yeah, so I'm thinking in the new year that we can come back and we can see, here are the actions we've identified. Here's what is in progress. Here are those areas that may be more longer-term or medium-term, and here's what our plans are. So I can commit to coming back in the new year and sharing that with council. The other piece that I just wanted, was to be mindful of, is that, you know, there is a historic stigma around disabilities, whether or not we want to, you know, recognize it. You know, we're coming with different biases, schema, all of that fun stuff, right? And so there is a historic stigma around disabilities. And so we see it permeate throughout our lives, whether it be recreation, at work, in all different spaces. So I think, again, as we talk about this more, you know, people will feel empowered, hopefully, to come forward, to ask for the things that they need, so that they can fully participate and be successful at work. So it's a larger change that we're seeing with the AODA, but also the work that we're doing through our own accessibility programs, you know, through the initiatives and the activities that we're having, is that we're trying to change, shift that narrative in that, you know, it doesn't mean that I can, that I should perform my job in a less, or a different way because I live with a disability. There are strengths that I bring as well, you know, through, just by way of having that disability. So is that shift, you know, in that stigma that we need to talk about and normalize, you know, these conversations? So again, people don't feel that, you know, they have to hide pieces of who they are because of how they might be perceived.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. Look forward to something in the new year there. I just, you know, think of the mindset of why we're here, and, you know, residents could expect government to be excellent and top of class. So don't want to be average, want to be excellent, want to be top of class, and the march to get us there, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. That exhausts the speaker's list, so.
Can I make a final comment?
Absolutely.
If you don't mind. You know, the few questions about trying to rate this organization with respect to the equity audit. But, so generally, average with respect to what I've seen, but where you're above average is the response, I have to say. The engagement in the process, the response and the openness to the assessment, the response and openness to the recommendations, right, from the top down. Certainly, as I said, some organizations disappear the report, but your willingness to actually embrace the recommendations and to make that change speak about excellence, right? And excellence is consistent with equity, right? They're not in opposition. And even the conversation here today shows me that, or, you know, makes me hopeful, that in five years' time, you know, there will be absolute change, and certainly, less work, because it's a continuous journey. But certainly, you'll be much further ahead along that road. Thank you.
Thank you. I know, Counselor Lee, I was going to come back to you, but Counselor Chapman, I'd appreciate maybe a 15-minute break, if you'd like to move that motion.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor Chapman, seconded by Counselor Grodd. 15-minute break. Thank you. Members of council, on the 15-minute recess, all those in favors? In opposition? Seeing none. We are in recess for 15 minutes. Of council and staff, could you please take your seat? Of council and staff, could you please take your seat? Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, we have quorum. Mr. Clerk, I will call this meeting back to order. I will ask that you do a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
We'll move on. Counselor Lee, prior to break, you had asked to bring Report 7.2 forward. I'm going to ask you to alter the rules to bring the item forward, please.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Mayor Piattre that the rules of procedure will be altered to bring item 7.24. On the item, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Now, the item is on the floor. It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded, so Counselor Lee?
Thank you, Chair. And again, thank you to Allison, her team, the entire C E O, like, recognizing there is a problem is a first step in overcoming it. And this was, you know, a very uncomfortable conversation to have.
Before you give a preamble, do you have any intent to do anything?
I just, yeah, I think I'm going to move an amendment to change the census from the five-year, which I believe that's what the report said, to three-year.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Brenner. So the amendment to the item is it's to receive, Mr. Clerk, so the wording would be, the amendment would be to receive, and we'll need it in writing, but could you bring it, please? Thank you.
So, yeah, just, you know, I'm glad we are putting the work in. So I guess my question's regarding the amendment is, would this be a reasonable timeline? I guess this would be to Allison, I think. In terms of, I think the timeline was 18 to 24 months to hit all the recommendations, is the three-year mark an appropriate time from your point of view to kind of do a census, kind of do a pulse check to see where we are?
Okay, we're getting a nod from Allison, so the answer is yes?
Okay, perfect. Then I'd like to absolutely keep moving on. And no more questions. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions on the amendment? This is on the amendment? Okay. On the amendment? Push the request, thank you. On the amendment?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thank you for bringing this forward. Will this put this in our term of council for a report back to us?
Three years, we'll bring it back in the last year of this council. This term of this council.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other requests to speak, on the amendment, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, in opposition? Mr. Clerk online? No? That carries. Now, on the main item, Counselor Shad, would you please push your request?
Sure.
Okay. On the main item as amended.
Very quick question through you, Chair Henry, to Allison. Will this report be shared with our anti-racism task force, please, just for reference?
Thank you so much. That'll be all.
The answer was yes, okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, so members of council, seeing no other requests, we're going to call the vote on the main item as amended. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. The next one is Report 7.1, Modified Payment Schedule for Brooklyn North Landowner Group. As Chair, would you like to move this? Counselor Chapman?
Chair, plating.
Okay, Chair, plating. Thank you. And, okay, thank you. Looking for seconded? Okay, seconded by Counselor Lee. So the item is now up on the floor. It's located on page 32 of your agenda. Seeing Counselor John Neal. Counselor Neal's online? Counselor Neal?
Yeah.
Counselor Neal, we'll try again.
Can you hear me? Yeah, can you hear me? Okay. Regarding this report, it says a Lexicon. So what responsibility does a Lexicon take for this? Why are we delaying it? Because the Lexicon is in default of getting timelines.
Thank you. I was, did you, Counselor, or, sorry, Mayor, why are you commenting on Counselor Neal's comment? Or you want to speak separately? Okay. Mr. Bridgman, can you update us on the challenge with a Lexicon, please?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I don't have much to say specifically, other than the fact that a Lexicon is working on it. I think we're going to, and we have kept them informed in terms of the growth forecasts that we have across the region so that they are as equipped as they possibly can be to make sure that the electrical services are where they need to be and when they need to be. But specifically, Counselor Neal, to your question, all I can say is they're dealing with it in whatever way they see fit.
Counselor Neal?
So how are they dealing with it? Like, I'm not clear on, there's no explanation in there from a Lexicon, like, what's the deal on it? Like?
Okay, so Counselor Neal, I'm going to go to Mayor Roy if you could give us kind of an answer to that question, a high level, please.
So there was a application made by a Lexicon on behalf of the town of Whitby and the Brooklyn Landowners Group to the Ontario Energy Board, and the Ontario Energy Board this past summer ruled against the cost recovery. So now we are in conversation with Minister Smith, Minister of Energy, and looking at other means and mechanisms of how we can get a electrical cord to Brooklyn, essentially.
All right, thank you. Counselor Neal?
Well, that kind of answers why, I guess, the holdup, but I still don't know why that has anything to do with the region.
Sorry, I can't.
I guess, I guess that's my overall question is, what's that got to do with the region?
Well, Counselor Neal, until Lexicon brings hydro into the area, they won't be able to build homes.
Okay, I'll just ask recorded vote on that.
Okay. Mayor Roy, you were on the list, so if you'd like to, you're on, your mic's on.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Within the report, and just to continue, just along the lines of the concern of what we're having, especially when we committed to meeting a target of 18,000 for a building of homes within the town of Whitby, the holdup here of being able to build homes obviously needs to have the electricity tied to it. But on the, within the report, when it comes to the, I believe it's 5.2, that if there's not an ability, and the speculation is that we could start the build for 2025, but there's no assurances of that, because even now, we still have to get ministry approval to give support for electricity for, well, Brooklyn. And this won't just be a Brooklyn issue. This is going to be North Durham issue for any future potential build that's going to extend across the northern aspects of our municipalities. But to say that they're going to have the cost recovery and to implement the terms of payment to be received by December 31, 2024, is there for sure no modifications to the payment terms to be considered for the future for this? I'm just a little concerned as to, one, is this also an additional way of holding up? And I know that with any site plan and execution, there will have to be payment made prior to executing any site plan moving forward, but we haven't received any funds, I believe, in the past year from the Brooklyn Landowners Group on this.
Okay, so I'm going to go to Mary Simpson. Mary, can you, could you push your request to speak, please? You're live. Go ahead, please.
Good morning. Yes, this is a difficult situation. However, it's our understanding when the original, I believe it was 2012 agreement was struck, that the timing of the payment was to be associated with the timing of development. And so as the mayor has spoken to, there are ongoing difficulties with the site, but we're hoping for resolution. And the recommendation before you is hoping to be able to recover the funds that were promised to the region.
Okay, I appreciate that. And just to you, Mr. Chair, at A M O with Ontario Big City Mayor's, we're not the only municipality within the situation of having struggles with getting electricity to service areas. And there was a group of us that did present to the minister, and our hopes to continue that conversation with Minister Smith.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Mayor Piattre?
Chair, good morning. I just wanted to echo the, probably the sentiments of most around the table and those involved here at the region and any municipality dealing with development in that the issue that we're seeing here today with respect to a particular area in North Whitby could be one that translates throughout the region and is certainly one that we've experienced in the city, but in different sort of capacities. Electricity is one, but I can tell you, dealing with our utility providers such as the gas companies is another. We really do have a problem, and I think it's not to point the problem out, but I'd like to just bring the conversation to the forefront in that we're dealing with a particular issue here, a utility issue, but I think we need a coordinated effort to see how we can get to not just this utility company, but also others, and help them do more than just understand, but get them to partner with us in a way that is actually, you know, going to result in development being expedited or, in the least, meeting the timelines that are prescribed. And just to conclude, I'll tell you that Oshwa's got the best utility company in the country, and I'm pretty biased of that. But I know that there are, there's data, there's all kinds of facts, including low rates to be able to back that. But that's not just good enough to have one utility company working the way that Oshwa's does. We need them all working in the way that they should, and that means the gas companies too. So I'm just going to ask through you, Mr. Chair, to staff as to whether or not we're formulating a strategy to be able to effectively deal with these utility companies, which essentially are putting a lot of these projects, not only delaying them, but putting them in jeopardy, especially in times like this where, you know, the market conditions and just the overall, you know, financial play is very delicate. So the more time wasted or delayed or impacted, you know, the least, the less likely your project is going to move forward, and if it does, it's not going to be as cost-effective, and therefore, there's the jeopardy for the community and our tax base.
Mr. Bridgman?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll start by saying that, and taking the regional official plan process, for example, utilities companies were circulated every step of the way as a way to inform them, as I mentioned before, the pattern and location and extent of growth that it's anticipated so that they can do their own business planning to make sure the services are where they need to be and when. I can tell you, Counselor, that this conversation has come up more recently with not only Lexicon, of course, but the gas as well, as you mentioned, because, you know, they are realizing that the rate and pace of growth is forecast to pick up and accelerate, and they want to be ready. So we are in more regular contact with them than we have been before, whether there's a specific strategy to ensure that. I mean, those are some of the business decisions they need to make, but we're doing what we can to make sure they're aware of where we see growth going in the region.
Okay. And through you, Mr. Chair, I think Commissioner Bridgman and anyone that's working on that approach, because it also, you know, has an impact on locates too. Like, we've got locates that we can't get for upwards of, you know, six months to a year, and that pushes projects back. So I think ultimately, we also have to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, the conversation around housing is that, you know, government tends to be the one that's sort of, you know, impeding the timely development or construction of housing. And again, I'm going to bring this to the forefront, as I did on previous items that we've dealt with. You know, large companies have a responsibility to play in this. And I think this forum is where we discuss and make sure that the public is aware that we're having difficulty with these companies, and hopefully, the ministers that we've spoken to can effectively deal with these large companies to be able to help the process of building homes and creating jobs in our community, because it is a problem, and we hope to have it solved with their support. Otherwise, there's nothing much more we can do. If electricity, gas, locates, and these utilities aren't being facilitated, we're at a standstill, even with, you know, the units that we have approved.
Thank you. Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're veering quite a ways away from the report in front of us, but I think it's important to make a couple of comments. So, one, a Lexicon or any utility, it is in their best interest servicing and putting money in infrastructure. So the vast, the biggest source of revenues is building infrastructure where the government has a deemed rate of return, that is an exceptionally high rate of return. The challenge in this case, and the gas companies are regulated by the O E B in exactly the same fashion that the utilities are, is that if the O E B does not recognize that there is cost recovery, so how do you actually pay for putting the stuff in the ground? In this case, no cost recovery, how does the utility afford, whether it's the gas, whether it's a Lexicon or any utility, without being able to cover the cost of bringing those services in? But every utility wants to do this. It goes immediately to the bottom line. Counselor Mayor Piattre, to your point, I can tell you, I'm getting sick to death of hearing about how municipalities are getting in the way of building houses. We don't build houses. In this case, again, we can go back to the O E B and the province and say, you want houses to be built? The infrastructure has to be there. So you raise an excellent point, but it's not so much these big companies stepping up, it's their ability as being limited to step up. And sorry, that's my rant and my therapy.
Thank you. So, members of council, that exhausts the requests to comment. Mr. Clerk, a recorded vote was called by Counselor Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recorded vote is starting now. For those members online, I'm looking for Mayor Schumer and Mayor Carter. One more call for Mayor Carter.
Members of council, there are no confidential matters. Mr. Clerk, that's the business for the day. I'm looking for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Counselor Chapman, seconded by Mayor Barton on adjournment. All those in favor? In opposition? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, members of council and staff.